Good morning, everyone. I call this meeting to order. I am the chair of the LNS Neighborhood Association. The LNS Neighborhood Association came here today to go over grievances from two members of our community. Joanne Bakini and another individual who would like to be referred to as just Gary. So this is a special board meeting. We wouldn't normally hold a board meeting just to address grievances, however, we are doing that today due to the unusually high number of grievances that we have. In a special board meeting, the public is allowed to attend, and so are representatives of the media. However, we will be going into executive session to deliberate on the grievances and to talk about them as a group. And that will happen shortly. So when we do that, that will be an executive meeting, and everyone else will be asked to leave while we deliberate. And I'm just going to read the statement about what an executive session is. So the LNS Neighborhood Association Board will now begin an executive session pursuant to the ONI Standards Article 5, Section D2, which allows the Board to meet an executive session to deliberate toward a decision on consideration of grievances. Representatives of the news media and designated individuals are allowed to attend the executive session. All other individuals will be asked to leave. Any information revealed in an executive session is considered privileged and may not be reported. Representatives of the news media specifically are directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome people back into the room. Minutes will be taken during the executive session. They will be filed in a separate location from the regular LNA meeting minutes and are not subject to a public records request. And so when we come back from our executive session, we will also go through what the grievances are and then go through what we deliberated on, and then we will vote. So the voting will be public. And before we begin, Joanne is here. She's one of the grievants, and she had a short statement that she wanted to read.
I am one of the grievants. I do not intend to stay for this meeting because a special board meeting to address and respond to grievances is being held illegitimately in violation of LNA bylaws and ONI standards regarding grievance procedures. It is my understanding that the other grievance has also shown up for the same reason. The Board, EPNO, and ONI have been consistently and continuously informed that the grievances being addressed today, mine and another grievance, have been at the appeal stages, in my case, since mid-October, due to the Board's nonresponsiveness. Violations include LNA bylaws, Article Roman 10, Section 2. Within seven days of receipt of the complaint, the Board shall arrange with the petitioner for a mutually acceptable place, day, and hour for review of the complaint. ONI standards, Article Roman 7, uppercase C, Arabic number 3, lowercase d. The grievance must be reviewed and responded to by the appropriate Neighborhood Association procedures within 60 calendar days from receipt of the grievance. And LNA bylaws, Article Roman 10, Section 3. The vote will take place within 60 days of receipt of the complaint. Contrary to what was stated in the LNA Facebook event announcement for this special board meeting, the grievances are not recent. The Board, EPNO, and ONI have been consistently and continuously informed of the LNA Board's failure to observe deadlines, starting in mid-October. The LNA Board, EPNO, and ONI have been nonresponsive. The first announcement that I received about this special board meeting was in a December 29, 2017 email from the LNA chairperson. My grievances were filed on August 23 and September 18, and refiled after board elections on October 2. January 13 is over 60 days after receipt of the grievance. It is over 90 days. I do not intend to remain for this legitimate special board meeting. My grievances have been at the appeal stage to EPNO and ONI since mid-October. The special board meeting is being illegitimately held, and the LNA Board, EPNO, and ONI have been made aware of this. And now I'm leaving. Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.
So this is a special board meeting. I'm not taking public comment, so I'm not going to be responding to that. But I'm not here going to go into executive session, and I'm having to ask anyone who is not on the Board or who hasn't been previously asked to remain to give us some space at this time. And we anticipate it won't take longer than an hour. We're aiming for an hour to go through all of them. We're going to deliberate on grievances, and then we will come and take a vote on them and talk about what corrective action we think we should take, if any.
I took a good listen.
So we are back now in our open session. The LNA Board has deliberated on Joanne Reese's grievances and on Gary's grievances. We have gone through each one to decide if there was any procedural violation, if any corrective action is needed, or if there's anything else that we can consider to improve the Board and our relationship with the community and the process that we have in place for our meetings, for our elections. And so at this point, I'm going to go through with a summary of what the grievance was, whether or not there was a procedural violation, and we are going to vote on what we found. So for Joanne Reese, we have nine grievances, and for Gary, we have six grievances. Number one for Joanne Reese, the LNA and Neighborhood System grievance process is discriminatory. She listed an LNA bylaw provision that was, procedural violation that was violated, Article 13 on nondiscrimination, ONI standard, Article 3A3, nondiscrimination. She claims that, you know, the process may be difficult because daunting, time-consuming, there's not enough time to file the grievances, only 45 days of the election, procedural violation. And she says that, you know, consideration of the grievances should be open to the public. We have found that there was no procedural violation. Our, the LNA grievance process follows the process requirements and time limits set out in the ONI standards. We did not apply the process differently to different individuals based on protected status. So because there was no procedural violation, no further corrective action is required. However, and you know, we are following ONI standards for grievances. However, we are choosing to clarify the process for submitting grievances and to differentiate between a grievance and a complaint. Grievance number two, previous LNA Board Chair consistently--
Do you guys want to vote?
Oh, not that one. So all in favor of the finding, raise your hand. So it's a unanimous vote in favor. Grievance number two, previous LNA Board Chair consistently did not perform the duties of the Chair and disregarded policies and decisions of the LNA Board. And she claims, you know, that multiple parts of bylaws and ONI standards were violated. She provided 18 examples that stand a wide variety of issues and different procedural requirements. We have found that some procedural violations did occur. The previous LNA Board Chair engaged in a pattern of behavior in which she did not carry out certain duties of the Chair. And in some cases, she exceeded the authority of the Chair. We have, we reached out to ONI and asked for clarification on who is in charge of the organization, the Board or the Chair. ONI consulted with the Oregon Department of Justice, and they both affirmed that the Board has the ultimate decision-making authority. So after receiving this information, the Board reassigned the Board's Chair responsibilities and took the lead in making decisions for the organization and implementing previously adopted Board policies. The individual who had been serving as Board Chair and that Joanne is referring to no longer serves on the LNA Board. So no further action required. We are going to address some of the concerns in our, in the rewrite of our bylaws, such as develop and adopt formal descriptions of the roles and responsibilities of the Board Chair and other officers, and maybe consider board training to ensure that any new LNA Board members and officers are aware of their roles and responsibilities. So all in favor of the findings, raise your hand. That was also unanimous. Grievance number three, previous LNA Board Chair tolerated cyber harassment and hostile behavior at LNA meetings and on the LNA Facebook page and did not implement the social media policy adopted by the LNA Board. So she provides an extensive list of examples of actions by the LNA Board Chair. We found that procedural violations did occur, and the Board Chair did not enforce the LNA ground rules for meetings, the code of conduct, or the social media policy developed and adopted by the LNA Board. So again, much like with the previous grievance, we reached out to ONI to find out about the duties and responsibilities of the Chair. Once we were told what those were, we reassigned the Board's Chair responsibilities, and the person who had been serving as the Board Chair no longer serves on the LNA Board. So at this time, no further corrective action is required. But, you know, we are committed to ensuring that the ground rules are followed for meetings and that disruptive behavior and threatening behavior is not tolerated. We were committed to developing and using a code of conduct for Board members so that Board members also support a positive and destructive culture on the Board. And we will continue to apply clearly defined and publicized social media policies to limit hostile and threatening behavior on LNA-controlled social media. And we could increase our engagement of the broad diversity of people in LNS to help people get involved, feel heard, and work together to serve the broader interests of the LNS community. So all in favor of this finding, raise your hand. That was unanimous as well. Grievance number four, previous LNA Board Chair unilaterally created a formal repository for LNA Board correspondence and leaked internal LNA Board correspondence on the LNA Facebook page and other LNA social media, often randomly and out of context, and would not share who had access to the repository. Joanne claims that there were LNA bylaws and ONI standards that were violated, the ones about Board of Directors, the election and duties of Board of Directors, and the ONI standard about communication. We found that procedural violations did occur. So it's, in our bylaws, it's clearly stated that it's the role of the Board Secretary to maintain the records. However, it's ultimately up to the LNA Board, not the Board Chair, to decide how to archive the LNA records and correspondence. And at the same time, the LNA documents are considered public records under the ONI standards. Anyone could choose to request and share these records. And the ONI standards also establish that our communications should not include defamatory statements. So after we received this information, we reassigned the Board's Chair responsibilities. We took the lead in making decisions for the organization and implementing previously adopted Board policies. At this time, no further corrective action is required. However, you know, in terms of actions that we might consider, we might consider developing a code of conduct, adopting a formal process for how we will archive LNA documents and communications, and, you know, going over our social media policy again and ensuring that it's fairly inconsistently enforced, and again, continuing to make sure that no formal communication from the LNA has the defamatory language in it. So everyone in favor of this finding, raise your hand. No one is opposed, so. Grievance number five, the LNA Board and previous LNA Board Chair were negligent in the management of informational kiosks, apparently owned by East Portland Neighbors and managed by the LNA. And she claims that the LNA bylaw that was violated was Article 13 about nondiscrimination and ONI standard about, also about nondiscrimination and communication. We found that there was no procedural violation. It's up to the Board whether or not to develop a policy for management of the kiosk. The bylaws don't require us to develop such a policy. However, we are committed to ensuring that we have a management policy and plan for the kiosk, and we are already taking steps to improve that, but at this time, no corrective action is required. If you are in favor of this finding, raise your hand. Okay. That was unanimous. Grievance number six, previous LNA Board Chair pressured LNA Secretary to release the LNA membership list despite such a release needing to be a board decision and possible release of the LNA membership list by the Board Chair without Board organization.
Authorization.
So, so the claim is that the Chair and Committee, the previous Chair and Committee members pressured Joanne to release LNA membership list in response to requests for membership without obtaining prior board review and approval. We found that there is no procedural violation because as far as we know, there is no evidence that the membership list was released. Something that we might consider doing in the future is if someone asks us for the list, we will have better steps in place, more clear, more clear steps for how, for how we will go about releasing that information or about connecting members with each other if that's why they're requesting the membership list. And we might consider developing and adopting a clear policy to guide how we reply to the status of the release of the LNA membership list. If you are in favor, raise your hand. In favor of the findings. So that was unanimous. Grievance number seven, previous LNA Board Chair characterized certain LNA committees as autonomous and not answerable to the LNA Board. So we found that a procedural violation did occur because committees are answerable to the Board. They're subject to oversight and control by the LNA Board and are accountable to the Board. So we, the LNA Board reached out to ONI. We asked for clarification on who is in charge of the organization. They clarified that the Board has the ultimate decision-making authority. So at that point, the Board reassigned the Board's Chair responsibilities and took the lead in making decisions toward the organization. And the individual who had been serving as Chair is no longer serves on the LNA Board. No further corrective action required. We might consider developing and adopting a policy that sets out the roles and responsibilities of LNA committees, what the committee reporting process is, and having information about the committees on our website. So the finding was that there was no procedural violation. If you're in favor of this, raise your hand. Eight, previous LNA Board Chair did not post meeting agendas in timely fashion. We found that there were procedural violations that occurred. The ONI standards require Neighborhood Associations to post notice of their general membership and Board meetings at least seven days before the meeting. They require us to post written, verbal, and notification, state the, written or verbal, state the date, time, and place of the meeting, and a brief description of topics on the agenda. Other topics that arise after notice is given may be added to the agenda at the meeting. At this time, we found that no corrective, no further corrective action is required. However, things that we might consider, Board members, you know, should work with the new LNA Chair to determine how the LNA will ensure the draft agendas for meetings are posted at least seven days before LNA general membership and Board meetings. And we've been pretty committed to doing that, but we will continue to do that as well. So if you're in favor of the finding, raise your hand. Grievance number nine, and the last one from Joanne. Previous LNA Board Chair blocked scheduling of EPNO and ONI facilitation Board mediation for three months. We found that there was no procedural violation because neither the LNA bylaws or ONI standards set a time limit by which an event requested by the LNA Board must be scheduled. An observation about this one, so this is more complaint against EPNO and ONI, and those should be directed to those organizations, those complaints. Any alleged procedural violation of the ONI standards by these organizations can also be pursued through the formal grievance process. Complaints about these organizations are not matters to be adjudicated by the LNA. No further corrective action is required. Something that we might consider, current Board members should determine what type of assistance would be most useful to them and who they want to ask to provide that So if you're in favor of this finding, raise your hand. And moving on now to Gary's grievances. He submitted six. After going through all of them, we determined that some of them are grievances and some of them are complaints. And so our overall conclusion with that is that, you know, we might choose to clarify in our bylaws and in our meetings the difference between grievances and complaints. Grievances are procedural violations, so whoever submits them will have to show which LNA bylaw or ONI standard was violated in. And not all of the, these complaints that Gary submitted also fulfill the grievance requirements. So grievance number one, Gary asserts that he was not allowed to run for more than one position in the September 2017 LNA election, and that he was not included on the written ballot because he refused to fill out the nomination form that the LNA asked candidates to fill out to be included on the ballot. So there's obviously several components to this grievance. Regarding running for more than one position, ONI and the Department of Justice advised the LNA that the LNA Board can set election procedures when they are not laid out in the LNA bylaws. The Board has the authority to determine whether candidates can run for more than one position. The Board exercised its authority and chose to limit individuals to running for one position at a time. There was, we found that there was no procedural violation with this one. Regarding not being included on the written election ballot, ONI and the Department of Justice advised us that the Board can set election procedures when they are not laid out in the LNA bylaws, and we have the authority to establish a nomination process. So we exercise our authority and to require individuals who want to be included on the written election ballot to formally submit their information to the LNA before the election as a condition of being included on the written ballot. So they just need to be sure that the requirements are applied consistently. We just need to be sure. And Gary refused to submit the form, and so he was not included on the written ballot. But again, that's not a procedural violation, so no corrective actions needed. So other actions that the Board could consider, we might consider developing a frequently-asked question guide for LNA annual elections that would describe the process and clarify issues like the ones that were just raised by Gary in this grievance. This will hopefully clarify the process for future LNA Board members and general members. So if you are in favor of this finding, raise your hand. Grievance number two, Gary asserts that the LNA Board violated the LNA bylaws when it allowed a Board member to run for a third consecutive term. This refers to Cora Potter being allowed to run for a third term as Land Use Chair. So the confusion with this is that in our bylaws, Article 7, Section 3, it says that a Board member may run for a previous position after a one-term hiatus. Sorry. So the confusion is that, oh, in our bylaws, it says that a Board member may run for a third consecutive term in a Board position, and then it lists two conditions. And the first one being that there are no candidates or nominations for that Board position following the second consecutive term of the Board member, and the second being that any member of the Association, except for the Board member in question, nominates that Board member for a third term. And according to Gary, both A and B, both conditions need to be fulfilled. But that is not made clear in the bylaws. So we, the LNA Board asked ONI and the Department of Justice for guidance on whether either or both requirements, these provisions, need to be met. And ONI and the Department of Justice agreed that because the bylaws don't indicate whether either or both requirements need to be met, the Board has the authority to decide whether one or both would be required. And the Board decided to interpret this provision to allow either rather than requiring both, that the requirements to be met. And based on the Board's decision, Cora Potter was eligible to run for a third term as Land Use Chair. And ONI and the Department of Justice encouraged us to amend the bylaws to clear up the ambiguity. But as it stands right now, no procedural violation and no further corrective action is needed. But we are committed to amending and clarifying the term limit requirements in our bylaws. So if you're in favor of this finding, raise your hand. Everyone is in favor. Grievance number three, Gary asserts that he was not included on the agenda of the August 2017 LNA general membership meeting. According to the bylaw that he's signing, any member may add an item to the agenda by submitting the item and writing to the Board at the seven days in advance of the meeting or by making a motion to add an item to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. An adoption of that motion requires a second and majority vote. Vote at the Board's discretion. The item can be postponed. So we are not clear how or when Gary requested to be on the agenda. He didn't indicate whether he submitted the subject of the topic he requested to be included on the agenda or that he simply asked that he be given time on the agenda. We found that procedural violations may have occurred. Something we might consider is in the future to allow LNA general members at the meeting to vote to approve the proposed agenda amendment. And, you know, definitely allow Gary to propose agenda items for future general membership meetings, either at least seven days prior to the meeting or at the meeting. Other actions that we might consider, amending the bylaws to clarify the process by which general members can propose items for a general membership meeting and the process by which the decision is made on whether to include the item on the agenda. And we might also choose to review how other Neighborhood Associations allow members to propose agenda items and to determine what process gets meets the needs of LNA members. So we found a procedural violation, a procedural violation may have occurred, but we're, it's unclear. On how, you know, it's unclear how and when he submitted the request to be on the agenda. So if you are in favor of this finding, raise your hand. Everyone is in favor. Grievance number four, Gary asserts that he was not allowed to speak at the September 2017 LNA Board meeting, and then was asked to leave. That the LNA Board meetings are held in a small meeting space that excludes members of the LNA from attending, and that Board meetings are held by a few LNA members. He does not identify any provision-- He does not identify any provisions, either in the LNA bylaws or the ONI standards, that were violated. Again, there's several components to his grievance number four. So the first one, not being allowed to speak and then asked to leave the meeting. Neighborhood associations are not required to allow public participation in board or committee meetings, although the public is entitled to be present. Gary repeatedly interrupted the meeting even after being asked by LNA board members to stop his disruptive behavior. So he was given a warning, and he interrupted again, and then he was asked to leave. But that board action is in compliance with the ONI standards. So there's no procedural violation on that one. The second assertion is that LNA board meetings are held in a small meeting space. Again, he doesn't identify any provision of the LNA bylaws or ONI standards that he believes were violated. The location of our meetings complies with the meeting location requirements in the ONI standards. So, no procedural violation. And LNA board meetings are held by a few LNA members. This is his third assertion. Again, he doesn't identify any provisions that were violated in the LNA bylaws or ONI standards. Our board meetings are meant to be for the individuals who serve on the LNA board. The only, you know, the requirement is that we have a quorum of board members to be present in order for our board to take action, and Gary doesn't provide any evidence that attendance of board members at LNA board meetings has not been meeting these quorum requirements. So again, no procedural violation. So no procedural violation on any of these, and so no corrective action is needed. Some things that we might consider, to just to kind of clarify some of these things, is consider reviewing at the beginning of every board meeting and general meeting, our formal meeting ground rules, the opportunity, if any, for, for LNA members and members of the public to speak, and the authority of the board member who's presiding over the meeting to maintain order and to ask individuals who disrupt the meeting to leave after one warning. We could also consider moving to a larger meeting space, which we are already doing. So, grievance number four, no procedural.
Did you vote already?
No, that's what I'm doing right now. So that was grievance number four, no procedural violation. We didn't find any procedural violation, so if you're in favor of that, raise your hand? All board members are in favor. Two more. Grievance number five. So in this grievance, Gary includes seven, different assertions. And ideally, each one of these would be a separate grievance. Since there are so many, I'm not going to go through all of them. Again, in order for complaints to be a grievance, it has to be associated with an article in the LNA bylaws or an ONI standard. And there's only two assertions in this grievance that meet that criteria. So I'll go just through those two. LNA board mediation was not open to the public. So he asserts that the board held a non-public, secret mediation among the board, and that violates public, open meeting laws. We consulted with ONI, we consulted with the city attorney's office, and they determined that a quorum of a neighborhood association's board members can convene without triggering the public meeting requirements if the members are not convening to make a decision or deliberate towards a decision. And the intention of the LNA board mediation that Gary is referring to was to try to help LNA board members work together more effectively. So it was not to make a decision or to deliberate towards a decision. So there was no procedural violation on this one. The second one, electing an at-large member in recent election. And he cites that the bylaw that was violated is Article 7, Section 3, which limits terms of office to two years with a possible term in some cases. But the bylaws are unclear as to whether the term limits apply just to the board positions applied in Section 6, or also include the at-large board positions referred to in Section 8. So he asserts that the at-large member that was elected is in violation of this article. But he doesn't provide enough information to make it clear how he believes the election of this individual violated the bylaws. And again, we found that there was no procedural violation, really on all of them, and so there's no corrective action is required. None of his assertions constitute a procedural violation of either the bylaws or the ONI standards. But something that we would like to consider doing is, something that we are considering doing is clarifying the term limit requirements in our bylaws. So if you're, if you agree that there was no procedural violation, please raise your hand?
I am abstaining on this one because I disagreed with the way the board removed the duties of the chair, but I did that at the meeting, so I have to. But I agree with most of the rest, so it's one of those things where if it was all separated, I could vote one way or another, but in this case, I think it's best that I abstain.
Also, since Ray mentioned that, I will, you know, to make sense, I will go through the different, the seven different assertions that are in his grievance five, even though we chose to only address two of them. So he asserts that the board removed the chair's duties, that the board mediation was not open to the public, that an at-large member was elected in a recent election, that some LNA board officers are failing to fulfill their duties, that the LNA must keep community and LNA members informed, that people who do not regularly attend LNA meetings were allowed to vote, and he also asserts censorship on the LNA Facebook page. And so we voted on this grievance, that there were no procedural violations. And the last one, grievance six of six. Gary asserts that he was not provided adequate freedom to speak at the October 23, 2017 LNA general meeting, and that the LNA board member, who is the transportation chair, was assigned to act outside his duties at the meeting. And he cites, so again, there's two, two things that he asserts, and he cites of LNA bylaws and ONI standards for each one of them. But according to ONI standard, Section 8, open meetings and public records, the chair of the meeting controls the extent of public participation, subject to any controlling bylaws or other rules of the neighborhood associations. And neighborhood associations are actually not required to allow public participation in board or committee meetings, although the public is entitled to be present. Nothing in the LNA bylaws or policies or the ONI standards prevents an individual who's presiding at a meeting from giving people a time limit within which to share their comments. So there's no procedural violation with that one. And then regarding the board member assigned to act outside his duties, again, nothing in the LNA bylaws or policies or the ONI standards prevents the chair, the board chair, or the LNA board members from asking a board member with strong facilitation skills and experience to facilitate or help facilitate a meeting. Again, no procedural violation occurred, that was what we found, and so no corrective action is required. So if you agree that there was no procedural violation, raise your hand? Everyone agrees. And with that, those were all of Gary's six grievances and all of Joanne's nine grievances. We are committed to addressing, you know, what other actions we could take in the future based on what we've learned from these grievances, and we will do that at future board meetings. We will also provide a report of our findings to the general membership and to the two people who filed their grievances as soon as possible. Again, this was a special board meeting to address these grievances, and we wouldn't normally hold a special board meeting to do this. However, we chose to do that because of the unusually high number of grievances. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.